People clean up the charter, you know, the capitals punctuation. Every sentence is written correctly and you know those kinds of things. And then the one that made the head of board finance from within the organization, not the first selectmen appointing the members and sharing it with them. And that was the quote unquote hot button issue of the that voting period. Another issue was that if you have six people openings for town council, that you vote for all six, not four, had been four. The six, so if you actually aren't voting on everyone who's got the issue survey. So as you can see from this June 15 listing that I forwarded to you, these were the issues that had been identified by interviews with all the department heads in the county hall. And anybody who had been appointed or elected to a body commission, board commission, committee, whatever. And so these issues then we kind of categorized by category. And they served as the foundation for the discussions on the commission. And the commission was divided into, there were nine of us. There were fifteen and one individual needed to drop off because of health issues. And so we ended up with nine. And the commission was divided into five teams. Each team took a section of the board's commissions, you know, committees, what have you, and did more in-depth research on the issues that had been identified by this broader group of people. And then discussed them, reported back to the full committee, commission. And then from those discussions came the identity of the issues that came the voting, five issues that were presented to the public. So as you can see from this list, there were a number of issues that then either needed more research or the commission at that time didn't feel that it rose to a level of needing to have a vote by the voters. Some issues could be addressed by ordinance or just, you know, some operating adjustments in the area that was identified. So there are various ways to identify problems as they are put to everybody's mind. What I did with our balloon is asked him to simplify the statute, which he has done. I was hoping he was going to do a perk chart so that I could really have a better understanding of the timing, you know, what, how many days you have your public hearing, how many days you have for recording, this kind, this kind of thing. That wasn't done and I think the commission itself could probably do that. So they had a really better understanding of what has to be done by when. But what I did outline is a clearer description of what's in the statute. So at the, at the point at which the town council, which is the governing authority for a charter revision call, once the issue is presented to the town council, we need a twenty, not twenty-three, two-thirds vote of the entire membership, not present, but the entire membership to actually call for the commission. And then within thirty days of that vote, the membership is selected. It could be no less than five or more than fifteen on the chores. No more than one-third may hold any other public office. And no more than a better majority should be members of the same group of party. So that, those are the constraints of appointment to the commission. It is done by the town council. So, and so then the clock starts ticking as to when there have to be, you know, public hearings and how you go about reaching out to the boards and commissions for, you know, their input. What more do you want to comment about? Well, one thing I, I just wanted to point out on the final report of the last one, and maybe you can clarify, the members of the commission were sworn in in September 2015. And then the final report was delivered July 2016. So that timeline is, so that met within the sixteen month maximum timeframe that you have to do your, your study. Okay, so sixteen months is the maximum, so we have to correct. And so that, from that July time was public hearing. And any comments from the council before the public hearing went back to the commission. So whether or not there are, you know, any changes or, you know, if it suggests that, you know, this, these, these were good, good, good issues. The commission that has time to make those changes, bring it back to the council and the public before it has to meet that deadline of, you know, when the issues have to be put on the absentee ballot timeline for the, for the voters. The, the feeling that I have always gotten from people who have done these revision commissions, those other councils, is that you want to bring these issues to the voters during a presidential year because that's when the most number of voters are actually at the polls. And so they have the input into how the municipal governance, you know, is carried out. So hence the 2024 consideration. So does anyone on the committee have any questions, thoughts?
Well, I think that people that served in the past should be included, not just personally serving the tools because they also have insight and knowledge on how this works.
Okay, something one of the other panelists. So I, I mean, I guess the issue that the committee has to decide is does this come to the town, at what point does this come to the town council? And do we need bylaws and ordinance to have a discussion? And at what point do we initiate the process in order to have that time to finish it?
I think, I don't want to speak this too, but I think you said that it can be either more of the commissioners getting this started. I don't see why we have to vote to find, find those ordinances.
Well, the only reason I said that is because the last time we did this, it did go through. So, you know, I feel like, I think earlier we mentioned that joint meetings or this is a general does.
Thank you.
Mark. But basically, one of those groups has to move a motion up to the full town council for the discussion. So if either of those groups vote to do that, then the discussion, the town council up. If you, you know, if you like, if you like, you have to get doing it, you have the programming. And then, you know, the fact that if you feel like there needs to do it now, the timing is right, then, you know.
Awesome. I just want to clarify a question. I think we talked about this in terms of the process, who's in charge? Is there, I mean, it establishes, it's not something we're, we're trying to come in and come up with now, right? There's, last time it was done certain ways, we were saying it was done better. If someone needs to lead the process, someone needs to shepherd it through and be in charge of that. My question is, is it the ordinancees or is it the government, finance and government?
I'm fine with either only because we're all here, whether or not. I'm finding that too. I just don't know if there's established precedent or.
Well, I mean, the precedent was just on my side, but it doesn't, I honestly think it's, it's, the council has, the whole council has. So it's, it's especially at the council level. And as Peggy said, it's a, you have to have that two-thirds, hard two-thirds vote.
You're saying that the town council has to weigh in on whether or not we proceed. But I'm just wondering if there's, there's somewhere it's written, how it's supposed to proceed and who is supposed to be in charge of it.
Which committee?
Yeah, that's, it doesn't say. Does it say anywhere in the charter? It doesn't. Okay, so this is up to us, it's not fair. So one, so one question is, do we want to do it? Second question is, who's going to lead it, right?
And time and when?
So those are the three things.
And, you know, if, if you take the next step where you, where one of the committees says okay, let's move it to the council. And then the council, the council has a big discussion about it. And then there would have to be a vote to form the committee, not to do it. And at that point, you have to go out and start to take names as far as who wants to serve on that committee. And, you know, you put that together. So, you know, Penny's right, because it takes a long time. It's a, it's a whole long process to get through the thing, get it started. Then the commission takes over. They do, they do all the work. And then eventually it'll come back to us and we'll have them report back to us at times and check in. But it's, you know, as, as we discussed at the last meeting, really to me, when some, when a resident asks, you know, why are you guys opening up the charter again? You gotta have the answer. And I still, and I'm searching for that answer. Like, what's the, this time, like, what's that hot button issue? Like we had the last time, it's pressing us to do this a little earlier, but we can't do it. And I, I'm still, I'm still searching for that, so.
Well, a little earlier than we normally do it. There, until the last charter revision, there was not a normally, when we do it. It was a whenever kind of a thing. And so in the charter revision, one of the ideas was that it would be recommended that every decade, the town council study whether or not it's time for a commission. So that's as specific as it got. And, and as I was saying, in having gone through the process and studying other towns, the thought has been, how do you get to the most number of voters? So consequently, the presidential cycle. And I, I, I think what, what I've been cognizant of since the last revision commission is that there were a number of issues that didn't get enough study and over time have been raised as stumbling blocks for process. Let me give you an example. The always discussed, should the board of selectmen be three or five people? And when you run into the three people scenario, you have a real block of communication between and among the members of the selectmen. So when you have, you know, two members not able to speak to one another, that really doesn't allow for brainstorming, you know, normal conversation about an issue. So because that was such a, is such a hot button issue that was not put on the last cycle because of the taking off of the selectmen instead of board finance. So I see, you know, that, that could be an issue that is really important. Should the term of office be two or four years? You know, other members on boards and commissions are four years and the selectmen are two. So you're constantly like a representative, always running for reelection. I mean, these were comments, you know, may not my opinion, that's just, you know, raising things that were raised. Should the police commission report to the selectmen? They go now. Should planning and zoning be to commissions? Or should it be expanded to be able to have more people address planning issues and zoning issues? And that can be handled by, you know, just extending, you know, the commission. So, so there are, there are issues that, let's see what else is on here. Should the town council be able to increase the budget? Or should the budget be referendum, as some towns do? It's probably a nightmare, but yeah, that's something to study. Should the town clerk be elected or appointed? There's something about fire commission. Should that be five members instead of three? So I think there are some issues that in the, when you, when you talk about flow of government, aren't there stumbling blocks that could be eliminated so that things move a little bit more smoothly? Is anyone online that wants to add anything? They're gonna have to go through their, suppose.
Chris, can you tell me if there's some power issue now?
I mean, there's also another, I don't know if it's on there, I don't think it is, but how you vote for selectmen also, something that I personally should be reconsidered.
Right.
I mean, I, I would be, I personally would be for going through this process. I think there's enough there. I think it's healthy to look at your charter. On a periodic, ten years, you know, and ten years is probably a good number. And I think it does make sense to put it before a bigger, you know, more, more of the townspeople. It should make sense to put it before them during a major election. So, I mean, I'm ready tonight to say, to, to vote for it. So that would be my position.
I don't see anybody with their hand up online, but maybe because we can't see them. So they should just speak up, right, Maria?
Yeah.
Yeah. Anybody feels like they want to say something, anybody in Zoom land? Oh, I see a hand. Tom Butterworth.
Hi, guys.
Hi, Tom.
I just wanted to mention something that I found amusing, so I wanted to share. I've heard people say, I think Tom O'Day is, is maybe the primary spokesperson for this point of view is that we have one of the best charters in the state. Why tinker with it? But it occurred to me today that maybe one of the reasons we have one of the best charters in the state is because we do tinker with it. So I'm sort of on the fence. I'd like to have a good, at least one good issue that, that I thought was compelling. I'm not attracted to the notion of doing it just to do it, especially considering the thoroughness that was brought to the table last time. But, and there are some things on the list that it would scare me if we did do it, you know. So I, anyway, but I just wanted, I just wanted to air those thoughts. I, I could go either way. I'll support either outcome. I just, I just, I just approach this with great humility because I think it's a, it's, it's a little bit of a risky process, but I'll be on board if we want to do it.
I mean, the idea is that we would bring it to the town council and the decision would be, do we form a commission, yes or no? But I feel personally that would be rushing it because we're going into the summer. I feel that there's some work we could do before we got to that step. So could the committees, you know, spend time looking at what the issues were that came up in 2005? And what happened in 2015 and what's still relevant? Of what, you know, we kind of have to do a little homework before we get to just starting forming a committee to determine if it's even, you know, do we have to go through the process or not? I feel like we need information before we can decide if we have to actually start the charter revision process.
I think having participated as a contributor to the opinions of having charters working or not working, I think that in some way or another, each, let's say, each commission or each representative board has an opinion based on the hurdles that we have faced and can present an opinion. I am not in favor of limiting the number of issues by maybe, let's say, five. I want to keep it open to see how many changes have been recommended. And then those that rise to the top are addressed. But I think that to look at the charter, to open it up, doesn't mean that we have to change it, but at least we're ready to, and we're assessing what works and what doesn't and how the public feels about it. So I think it's a healthy process, but I think it has to be an open and transparent process. And none of this repeat what has happened in the past.
And what? The commission, the commission itself is the one that does solve the deep dive into the issues, not, not us.
Well, you were on the committee, so when you're saying that, that's what you.
By, by the twelve members of the town council. It, it was the, it was the compilation of all of the issues that all the department heads and anybody who was elected or appointed to a board of commission, they were all submitting their concerns about the charter. And that's how the big list was formed. And then the commission, once they got that big list, then divided into teams to do the, you know, real deep dives into each of those issues.
I think Christine made a really good point, though. The idea is not, we're going to revise the charter. The idea is we're going to review it and see if it makes sense. And I like that approach because the right answer might be, you know.
Right.
But again, I like what you said, which is it's really healthy to figure out, to look at, and make sure that we're operating, you know, up to date.
My worry is if you decide on July, June 15th to do, if you say yes, let's form a commission, you only have thirty days, right, to form that? Isn't thirty days from the point of, to form the commission?
But what, what's the problem?
It's June 15th to July 15th, when everyone's schools getting out. Like, I just feel like it's a pretty, the timing for the commission. It seems like people are going on vacation. I just think the timing, I don't think that's the right time to do this and to decide on June 15th, that within the next thirty days, we're going to find all the members of the commission. The last commission actually was formed in September, right? And, and had plenty of time. So we actually now, we discuss it in July and everybody has a little bit better feel for moving forward. We've got the rest of the summer to come up with names. I, I, I just took a crack at it the other day. And I came up with almost a full page of names, of people who've been involved in various ways with governments.
What we want to do is not come up with the names, but open the doors for people to follow.
Sure. Well, I mean, yeah, you would, you would do an announcement. And I think there are people who would be interested in submitting their names. And those certainly would be, you know, on the list to consider. But I think we've got time to, you know, to build that list.
I would agree with that. We open it up. Like, I do think we have time. We don't have to decide, you know, at a next meeting. But we open it up and let people know and kind of roll it out, like usual, July. I guess at some point we have to bring it to the town council to officially vote. I also think maybe bylaws and ordinance might want to have the same discussion if, if we want to, you know, take into consideration they did it last time. So Tom, I don't know if you want to speak about that.
His hand is up. Yeah, Tom, your hand is up. I don't know if you're.
Yeah, I just wanted to do a commend Maria for your insight about summer. And I'm glad to hear Penny say that September could be the go date. And so, yes, I would, I would definitely defer the decision in order to not lock ourselves into a thirty-day timeframe until we're a little better prepared. As to bylaws and ordinances, I don't. Well, the other point I was going to make before I get to that is that, is that if, when we do take the vote, what I recommend to each member is that if they find any one issue that they think is compelling and important to scrutinize, they should vote to set up the commission. I mean, it's just a yes, no vote. If you can't find any, then don't, let's not put us through the grinder needlessly. But I'm getting the sense from people that there's, there's some sense that there, there, there are enough issues here to justify it. As to bylaws and ordinances, you don't need us to, to make the go-no-go decision, but we'd be happy to, if you want us to, if we, I think we opened Hillary's input to, to review the, the recommendations that people make and sort of formalize them before they're handed over to the commission, if that's helpful. Not, not, not to change the substance of them, but maybe just make sure that it's, everything is sort of neatly formatted and clean. But I, I don't think we have, I don't think you need us to decide whether to go or no-go on the commission.
Yeah, because the council will do that.
Right.
Penny, can you remind us, when you start the process, like when you vote, that triggers all the time to tie it, like, once we, once we do it?
Right.
So if we voted in September to do it, that triggered everything, we still make it to the, to the.
We can still make it because we did, we did last time.
Yeah.
You know, the vote was September, the committee met first time beginning of October. And then they took it over.
And then remind me, because I, I have a racist from my memory, but the commission comes back to the council, I think.
Yeah.
And we have to approve the changes. And then there was the whole issue of figuring out the wording of the ballot, which was a whole other world.
Yeah, well, that, that I think gets done with the town clerks, you know, to make sure that it's the, the yes vote that gets the yes or the no. But, you know, it's not one of these twits of things, you vote no and make it happen, kind of thing.
Because what I'm saying is, you know, as, as you think through like that timeline, so September, November is the election, and there's likely going to be several new members of the council at that point. So it would make sense to, because it's going to be the new town council's role to get all that done, so.
You can deliver it now, let's just do it.
I, I get that, but we are literally passing the time to whatever the new, the new council. Well, what, so my point is, to finish my point, is that if you say there's six people that are eligible to, because the last time we had Democratic, Republican that were on this, that served on directly on the commission for county leadership. So if you, if you say that technically you have six people that are eligible, given that timing, to be on that committee, half of the council.
But I said that we can manage both people that have, are serving and people that have served.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. But I'm just making the point that it's a limited pool of council members to choose from, to put on if you're going to establish it in September.
Like, the pool will change most likely, so I think that's something to keep in mind.
But it doesn't, it doesn't stop anything. I just want to make it aware of that, that, you know, you know, you could wait until after the election to put the two, to appoint the two members to whatever existing commission you have, which is fine too. That would be, you know.
We have thirty days, so we should backtrack thirty days from the election.
I just.
Then, so then there would be no delay, but you have thirty days to form the commission.
So I feel that's not fine.
Yeah.
I, I think the delays, I, they're not going to have enough time to do the work.
Penny, you're, you're right. I think it's Christmas.
Yeah. And, I mean, I think that's just the reality of, it's on council meeting, you know, changes. And we can't stop work because of that. I, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think, I think you made a really good point. I just feel like I hate to say that, but I almost came in that before, but.
Well, this, this is definitely the.
It is the.
It's not, it's not, maybe it's the.
Yeah, and I feel with you, like, I agree with you. I just, I, we also need to keep things as well, but.
I think it would be helpful to have a timeline that you said, ours is going to put together something with sort of the fifth and, oh, right here. I know, but working backwards, you need. Oh, right here, I know, but working backwards, you need, if you want to do it by this date, then you need the letter, the hearing, the publication. Okay, all I can say is, there's enough time, that we do our final vote in September and appoint that committee in, in September.
So you think, so then if you vote in September, you're saying that, well, actually you'd vote and appoint the, appoint the committee at the same time for.
Yeah, we actually could have a special meeting at the beginning of September to final approval. By the end of September, have done, you know, and we'll have some, you know, advertising over the summer time that this is being considered, if you're interested in serving our recommissions, submit your names. It doesn't have to be waiting until September, you know, to get the, the word out. I've actually had one individual emailing saying, if you're, if you are and go have a commission, I'd like to be considered. Just from the casual, you know, minutes and meetings that we've been discussing. So people do, actually do listen to our meetings, which I think is kind of fun, but.
I think, I think Steve was saying that we should think of the town councils having two, two cohorts. One cohort who's not up for election in the fall and the other cohort who is. But if we pick somebody from the cohort who is actually up for election and they're not reelected, we can still replace that seat, right? I mean, we, we.
Yeah, I mean, it was, it was a Republican and Democrat, and, you know, he wanted to keep it, keep it that way, because that's, that's how to do it. And if you, if, if somebody ran and wasn't elected for some reason, then you just slide in the next available.
Right.
I kind of equate this to, we all sit on a number of nonprofit organizations. And you periodically look at your bylaws, not saying that you're going to change them, but review them periodically so that you know they do work, things change in operations. And you may need a little tweak here, a little tweak there, or a big one.
Yeah.
But you do, in order to be a healthy organization, look at who you are, what you are, how you are, and make sure that you're operating to the greatest efficiency. And even though we have a reputed great charter, it still could be better, possibly, you know?
So to wrap this up, is that, should this just be a discussion at our next meeting? I don't think a vote, I, you know, personally, I don't think we're ready to vote to move forward. I would love to have a discussion and have people do homework with everything that's, you know, in the charter revision folder. There's a lot of stuff to read. So I think it should be a discussion at our next meeting, I hope, and then from there we'll decide.
And that's what I think. Vote in September, but everybody in the meantime should be considering individuals to serve.
I wouldn't understand, I guess, yeah, and to the goal that we're trying to reach, yeah.
The goal is make it better.
Right, but also, but, no, but also if there are issues, right, like it's kind of due diligence as well. And for insular maybe issues, should be considered because that would compel people to weigh it together as well in the discussion.
And we also have to allow the public here in simple.
So we got a letter from the sports statement, that's that letter we got, who is that? My, the Ben and Sally, Ben and Sally, I was trying, I was trying to.
So, so as soon as the commission is formed, the commission has two public hearings. One hearing is held before any substantive work commences. So they have that public input during the same time, and they go out to all the boards, commissions, department heads, and get their input on what in the charter has been stumbling blocks for them. And so then the commission gets going. And at the time, they have a draft report, they again have a public hearing to see whether or not the public agrees with what they have come up with. And it comes to us as well, we tweak it or not. And then they're all running to a ballot board reporting. So there's, there's annual obligatory public hearings and.
Right, and if we discuss it in our meeting, that brings it to the public's awareness that these documents are public. So maybe, I think we should just make it a topic of conversation at the next meeting.
For a.
But the general level report, so they have a meeting, what was this guy saying?
Yeah, but I don't want it to be at the end with the committee reports, this has to be in the general, I think.
All right. Cents, the general sentences. I think that's a wrap.
I need to return.
My second. And I, I'm a rep. All in favor of the I?